Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting of August the 3rd. At this time, I'd ask everyone to stand for our invocation, remain standing for our pledge. Our invocation day will be by Councilmember Lynn Bryan.
Let us pray. Our Father, thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from harm, guide us and teach us to be true to each other ourselves in thee. Amen.
We now do the pledge. Attention, salute pledge. Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll now call this meeting to order, and the first thing of business is I'll ask our Vice President, Mr. Lynn Bryan, for the confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
I'd like to make a motion, or receive a motion, to amend the order, to amend the agenda and the agenda order by adding item 18 in the matter of demolition resolutions. This item was tabled on July the 20th, 2021, and it was removed from the agenda, and it should not have been. So the only thing we're doing is adding item 18 to the agenda, which is in the matter of demolitions and resolutions, and it's a tabled item, to remain tabled.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Beard. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go into proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda, beginning with proclamations. Do we have any proclamations, Mayor? We'll go to recognition of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. I don't see any Boy and Girl Scouts here tonight. Employee recognitions.
We have two that are out here.
We have two, but they're not here, so they don't get recognized tonight. We'll do it some other time. Public recognitions. I'll start with Chad. Do you have any public?
I do not.
Ms. Janet?
I do not.
Ms. Rosie?
No, I don't have any.
Lynn?
No.
Travis? Just a couple of items, President Palmer. Just with COVID situation, it seems like it's increasing in our community. I just encourage the members of our community to be careful and be faithful in wearing a mask. You hadn't got a shot, to get a shot. Also, I just want to remember the families that devastated our community last week, that were involved in the loss of life, some former Tupelo High School students. And with school beginning, it'd be tough on our teachers and our staff, so I want to keep those families in our prayers.
Amen. Ms. Nettie?
I also would like to ask that you remember the three young people that were killed last, which was last Saturday, the fourth day sometime during that time. But one or two of them will be funeralized Saturday at White Hill Church, and we just need to really be in prayer for our young people, just in general, in the community, and to ask that God would just kind of watch over them as they experience growing up and a lot of times not thinking things as dangerous as they are. So I'd like for us to be in prayer for the families. And then I had a birthday Saturday, and I was happy that I'm still in good health for that. And I also was inducted in the Hall of Fame at the MML meeting, which we had a wonderful meeting and a well-attended, and everybody was glad to see everybody because the year before, we didn't have MML.
Well, congratulations are in order, and happy birthday to you, my lady birthday. At this time, we'll go to the very anticipated Mayor's Report.
Anticipating Report. First of all, I want to echo the remarks of Coach Beard, Councilwoman Davis, on the shootings a few weeks ago. You know, we were never guaranteed how long we're going to be here. And I do want to commend the Tupelo Police Department and everybody that worked with them, and apprehending everyone on all the shootings over the last couple of weeks. Speaking of MML, very well-attended, want to say thanks to Alex Farnin with Park and Rec, and also Marcus Gary, along with Hannah Mahary. They taught some classes. Actually, the Ocean Springs Mayor wants Marcus and Hannah to come down and speak to them on what we're doing here. You know, homelessness is something that we're always chasing. There's different aspects and different reasons, but I want to compliment them on the job they're doing. A lot of people don't know, but you know, they've housed a lot of those people, and they've got jobs and are paying the rent, so I want to commend them too. And happy birthday. Congratulations, Ms. Davis, and looking forward to another week of work, and appreciate everything that you do and the public does, and I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda, beginning with the public agenda. Public hearings, in the matter of public hearings for the 2022 budget. Do we have anyone to speak to that? We do. Your name, address, and you've got, you said three minutes, we'll give you up to five.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jeff Tomlinson. I'm the Director of the Lee County Library. Thank you for your time this evening. I do want to recognize a member of the library board with us this evening, Dr. Debbie Jones. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for your service to the library and to the community. I just wanted to give you all a very brief update about the library. But since the library reopened in May of 2020, patrons have made over 97,000 visits to the library, which is about 300 visits per day. Last year, 1,310 people registered for library cards, bringing the total number of current library cardholders to 23,973. Library patrons borrowed over 109,000 items, or roughly 350 items each day. Approximately 40% of those items checked out were from our young adult and children's collections, about 44,000 items in total. The public computers and the wireless network was accessed 38,000 times. Looking forward, we anticipate the delivery of our new bookmobile sometime during this coming fiscal year, and we look forward to making library resources available in many more neighborhoods and communities throughout Tupelo. Thank you for supporting our operating budget request and our one-time request for funds to purchase the new bookmobile. And as always, anyone who lives, works, or goes to school in Lee County is eligible for a library card. And I would just say that now is the time for you and your family, especially children, families with children, to visit the library and to sign up for a library card. Thank you for your time, support, and service to the community.
Thank you very much. Do we have one other, or maybe several? Introduce yourself.
Yes, sir.
Five minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Robbie Palmer. I'm the Director of the Regional Rehabilitation Center here in Tupelo. I've got my seven-year-old son. It's the first time he's been to City Hall, so it's really exciting. So thank you for letting me bring him. I just want to, number one, thank the City of Tupelo for all your support for the Regional Rehab Center for so many years. We, like everybody else, it was a tough year during the pandemic, but we were really blessed to be able to keep our doors open, and actually, we're able to see 891 people there at the rehab center. That equaled over 44,000 services. We're still providing physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, early intervention services for zero-to-three-year-olds with developmental delays, and dyslexia services that includes testing as well as therapy, and do that all free of charge and don't charge insurance or Medicaid. And that could not be done without the support of the City of Tupelo. And we don't take that for granted, and we are so appreciative. I'm really excited to say that due to your support and the community's support, the rehab center, we've been around for over 60 years now, and we've got the largest staff we've ever had, 23 individuals. You can count 24 because Ms. Kay still comes to see people voluntarily, but so we're super proud of that. I know y'all, I've been doing this for seven years, and I know y'all have heard me speak. So what I wanted to do for my next three minutes is actually bring Phil Dodrell up, who's a parent of a young man named Hopson, who currently gets our services, and just so he can say a few words on our behalf. That's all right.
Absolutely. So I'm going to power through this really fast. I'm a passionate guy, and I only have a couple of minutes, so I'm going to go fast. How many of y'all were in attendance at the regional rehab dinner for Ms. Lisa Hawkins a few months ago? Anybody, or any of y'all here at that? A couple of y'all. So my son Hopson was a little redheaded fellow that gave his extended invocation. I want to tell you a story about him. My wife Susan and I have two boys. We have one that we just moved into Ole Miss today. He'll be a freshman over there, and we have one that's going to seventh grade at Tupelo Middle School. They could not be any different in looks, attitudes, hair color, anything else. Our youngest, when Hopson, when he was going into the fourth grade, my wife was a schoolteacher before she came home. And I began to notice that homework took more and more time, to the point where they were taking four and five hours a night to do homework, and that shouldn't happen at that age. And my wife said, "Something's wrong." I said, "Nah, he's just different than the other one, something, it's okay." "No, something's wrong." Well, then she began to cry. All right? And so we went through a series of testing. Long story short on that, he ended up being dyslexic, and we went through some therapy and some other issues outside of a regional rehab, and we couldn't make any headway. And then we were lucky enough to test in and be accepted into regional rehab. And I will tell you, for my child who could not read, or was not good at reading at all, he has come so far in what regional rehab has been able to help him do. I looked at something today, and this is not being braggadocious, but he finished his awards day at Mylan back in the fall, and he had the highest, Chris Pod, the highest English average, highest math average, highest science average. And that's not to brag on my child, but just because what regional rehab has done for him with four-year time span. Your support for regional rehab is very much appreciated. I tell people this every time I speak for rehab. Money can buy a lot of things. Good insurance can buy a lot of things, take care of things. Your money cannot buy the services that take place at regional rehab. Could you get some of those services? Yes, but what you can't buy is you can't buy the love, you can't buy the attitudes of the staff, and you cannot ever walk away from there and not feel unloved. Doesn't matter what money you do have or don't have, what color your skin is, doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, none of that stuff matters, because everybody's loved their regional rehab. Everybody's taken care of, the regional rehab. If you can't take care of things, they take care of it for you. And the reason that that's able to happen, the reason that that is the epitome of the Tupelo spirit, is because of people like you in this community that make that happen. We appreciate you, we thank you, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Introduce myself simply because the vast majority of you do not know me. I'm a Southern-born in Birmingham, Alabama, but I was raised a cheesehead from the age of seven on. That's Wisconsin. My wife is a Flatlander, better known as Illinois. And we decided to retire after many years of work up in the upper Midwest in Elvis's hometown here in the city of Tupelo in October 2016. So the matter of a couple items that I've requested to be able to speak to you about with regards to the ice and snowstorm the week of February 14th through the 20th, which is a Sunday through the Saturday in 2021. I concurred those dates with Matt Laubon, our local weatherman at WTBA News last week, to make sure my memory wasn't faulty with regards to the storm. And in that email that he sent to me, Matt stated that the storm peaked about midweek, and after that, the roads became more passable towards the end of the week, February 19th through the 21st. So ladies and gentlemen, because of this, residents on Opew Avenue, where my wife and I reside, which is just off of Veterans and Interstate 22, if you're unfamiliar, that east side part of the town, we didn't receive the Schedule III pickups that week from Waste Management. All right? Two of them for garbage, one for recycling. So anyways, what I'm requesting is that the council and Tupelo Water and Light's Director, Johnny Timmons, to contact the Waste Management Building Manager and Director over there, whatever his or her title is. Last I heard, it was Mr. Shackelford. He may have been succeeded by someone else. And to provide the city council president, Mr. Palmer, and Tupelo Water and Light Director Timmons with a detailed report of all planned routes for that week of February 14th through the 21st, 20th, in the city of Tupelo, noting all canceled routes of pickup for said week. After the council and Tupelo Water and Light review the report, I'd request that myself and the residents of Opew Drive and Tupelo issued a 25% credit for Waste Management Service on our September 2021 Tupelo Water and Light billing. Additionally, should the report from Waste Management show canceled routes elsewhere in the city of Tupelo during that said time period, that Waste Management Tupelo Water and Light should also credit all citizens and businesses' accounts who likewise did not receive their service. I would appreciate it if y'all could provide an answer by the next council meeting in September. I believe it is the 7th, so about a month from now. Next, I'd like to request to form a fact-finding committee composed of council members, appropriate city department managers, as well as concerned citizens like myself, to address at the very least two items concerned that my wife and I have observed in the almost five years that we've lived down here. This relates to that week of, in particular, February 14th to 20th, the loss of substantial sales tax revenue to the city of Tupelo. Okay? And the loss of income and revenue to citizens unable to go to work, businesses unable to operate, roads being impassable or had to travel on by the said vehicles. Likewise, this would then conclude with a final slash ongoing report of recommendations, cost-benefit analysis, resulting in a citywide plan to keep city roads open and/or to reopen as soon as possible to avoid future road closures, detours, et cetera, due to inclement weather. Said recommendations, plans, and funds be implemented, if at all possible, for the winter of 2021, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Johnny Timmons and myself and our legal counsel will get together and talk about this, and we'll get back with you.
Very great. You have my contact information from my request.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I'd be happy to answer any additional inquiries or questions to help you out.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public agenda and open the regular session. We have no items on the accident agenda. We'll start with the routine agenda. Item number four, in the matter of approval of minutes of the special call meetings of July 19, 2021, and the regular city council meeting, July 20, 2021.
I move that we would approve all three minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Nettie Davis, and we have a second by Mr. Travis Beard. Any discussion at all? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item is five, in the matter of bill pay, August 3, 2021.
Move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard. We have a second by Ms. Gaston. We have tonight, we had Ms. Gaston, Travis Beard, Buddy Palmer paid the bills under the supervision of Johnny Timmons and Tracy Diller. All in favor of paying the bills? We're going to do it. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number six, in the matter of advertising and promotional items. And I think we have one for $260, which is a back-to-school ad, which is covered in budgets, so...
I move that we approve promotional and advertising item. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard. We have a second by Mr. Bryan. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. In the matter of surplus fixed assets.
I move that we would approve the surplus fixed assets.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Douglas. We have a second by Mr. Beard. Ms. Hannah? Is she here or not? Yeah. Caught your best surprise?
Yes, as we were preparing the last surplus list for the council, this list, this exhibit actually did not make it to the list, and we're just trying to make that right, present you with the list, most of the items can be destroyed, but there are a few that made it to auction, and we would like to get this corrected.
You have any questions for Ms. Hannah, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Number eight, item number eight, in the matter of review slash approval of appointment of Chuck Williams as our Public Works Director effective August 3, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, a second by Ms. Rosie?
No.
Ms. Gaston, Ms. Gaston. Mayor?
Yeah, Chuck Williams started Tupelo Public Works in 1993, working his way up from traffic control all the way to director. And talking to Mr. Williams, we are on the same page on what we'd like to see done with the city. And I think he's done a good job, and we're going to get better in that department. We're going to get a little labor help. And, you know, with that, I appreciate y'all confirming that for me.
Any questions? All in favor, Chuck Williams. That's unanimous. This next item is in the matter of review slash approval of appointment of Johnny Timmons as Tupelo Water and Light Director effective August 3, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gaston, a second by Ms. Rosie. Okay. Mayor?
Well, I tried to read his resume, but I usually don't read novels.
Didn't.
So I quit.
Yeah, why do we have him here? Let's go with it.
I know. You know, a lot of people just think it's keeping the lights on, keeping your water running, but, you know, Mr. Timmons has kept up with the times in his 47 years. And I had to appoint him because if I didn't, everybody under him can retire. So we would be left with nobody at Water and Light, so kidding aside, I'm looking forward to the next four years for that appointment.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that I don't know how the light and water department operate with Johnny Timmons. He is just a super good person, and we were making the best of Mississippi, also Chuck too, but Johnny been around, I believe he probably get the award for one of the largest number of years working for the city.
Yeah.
For all this time.
All in favor of Johnny Timmons. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number 10, in the matter of lot mowings.
Move that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. All in favor of this lot mowing? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Number 11, in the matter of approval of 2021-2022 NMNU North Mississippi Narcotics Unit Interlocal Agreement.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bryan. We have a second by Mr. Beard.
Yes, thank you, if it pleases the council. The North Mississippi Narcotics Unit's been an organization for over 25 years, and Tupelo Police Department has been the host agency for that long, ever since its inception. This unit is one of the servile in the state. It's multi-jurisdictional. The advantages are greatly for all involved. With this one, we have here, it's seven cities and five counties. We have jurisdiction in all of these with approval of the sheriffs and the chiefs of those cities and counties. The unit pretty much pays for itself. It has its own budget. The budget is audited by the state occasionally, and it's looked after by the city of Tupelo's finance departments, so we're all, we're all in line for that. And it has, as I said, a great combination of manpower. We have some, the chief of police of Tupelo is always on a board. He has a seat on the board for this narcotic unit. There's five people on the board. The other board members are elected by the cities or counties that are represented. And Tupelo still has a narcotic unit that works the city, but these people help, all these people help with the city of Tupelo as well. It's just equipment that you wouldn't be able to afford. Most cities would not be able to afford, even Tupelo at times, of what they have, of surveillance and all, and the advantages are, as I could say, are one of the biggest things we'd like to consider voting for this. If approved, then all the cities and counties will have to approve in their jurisdictions, and they'll get on to the Attorney General's office for final approval.
Anybody have a question for Chief Clayton? Ms. Rosie?
This North Mississippi Narcotics Unit, is it, does it consist of any minorities?
Some of the cities and counties may have minorities on the team. I'm not sure of all who's on of all those counties.
Here in Tupelo?
I'm sorry.
Here in Tupelo?
No, it has, but our lieutenant retired this year. He was minority.
So the people that's on the board and serve on this is voted by who?
The chief of police has a standing seat on the board of Tupelo, and the other people on the board is voted on by the sheriffs and chiefs of the cities represented.
So the citizens of Tupelo don't vote for anyone here in the city to be, to serve on that board?
No. No, ma'am.
Any further questions? Thank you, chief. All in favor? We have, all in favor, we have one extension or a name vote?
Name.
Okay. We'll go to item number 12, in the matter of bid rejection, 2021 Infrared Pavement Restoration, 12-month supply, 2021-021 PW, Mr. Chuck Williams. I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Move that we reject the bid for 12-month supply, 2021-021. So moved. I mean, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard. We have a second by Mr. Bryan.
I want to ask...
Okay, Chuck.
Could he explain that? It's a little, you know, I need to hear explanation for this one.
Yes.
A little confused on this.
Yeah, this is a process we've already, in the last couple of years, they've come in, hit asphalt, put rejuvenated in it, and they come over from Alabama. Last year, they did not come at all because of COVID. The year before, we used them some, and this year, they just did not want to be on the project, so they just refused the bids, which was fine with us, I mean, but we just didn't have any bidders, so we just asked them, and they're going to reject it, if you don't mind.
So will you do this later, or it just won't get done?
If we need some spots, and what we normally do with this is like, if we have a cut in the road, it's kind of rough, we would bring this company in, and they would smooth it up for us. But if we need something done, we could do it under quotes, if we needed to, and keep it under $50,000. But right now, we're so busy with other things, we really don't have time for this. And this is more of a wintertime stuff, so if we want to revisit this later, we've got plenty of time to do that.
Any other questions for Chuck? The motion is to reject bid, 2021 Infrared Pavement Restoration, 12-month supply. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 13, in the matter of bid approval, 2021-015 PW curb and gutter, 12-month supply.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bryan. We have a second by Mr. Beard.
Yes, sir. This is a bid I grant before y'all every year. We just hire a company to lay our curb and gutter for us. We are asking that you would approve Slaton Concrete to be the, they're the only bidder this year. We ask you to approve that.
Any other questions for Chuck? The motion is to, I'm sorry. Yes.
So is this for the whole city of Tupelo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? The motion is to approve the bid, 2021-015 PW curb and gutter, 12-month supply. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Item number 14, in the matter of award for Ballard Park Drainage Bid, number 2021-018PR.
Move that we approve the award for Ballard Park Drainage.
Second.
We have a bid by Mr. Beard, a second by Ms. Rosie.
Yes, we recently opened up bids not too long ago for this drainage project at Ballard Park. We had nine bidders for this project, and the lowest bid was $145,545 from Hannah Construction. And I'd ask you tonight that we award this bid, the lowest and best bid, to Hannah Construction.
Any questions for Alex? The motion, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rosie. I'm sorry.
You're fine. You did say that's the only bid you had, right?
But we had nine bidders. They were the lowest and best bid.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that.
You're fine.
The motion is to award, to grant the award, a matter of award for Ballard Park Drainage Bid, 2021-018PR. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Item 15, in the matter of CVB International Travel, July 22, 2021.
I move that we would approve the Convention and Business Bureau Travel, July 27, 2021.
My second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis. We have a second by Chad Mills. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is our request for Jeanne Bradford Curley, who is our international sales manager, to travel to London for, to be a part of Brand USA Travel Week. While she's there, she'll meet with international tour operators and conduct training sessions for them on how to sell Tupelo in the deep south. We also are needing to set her maximum per diem rate while on this trip.
Anyone have questions for Mr. McCoy? All in favor of this motion? Mr. Beard?
Yeah.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 16, in the matter of CVB minutes of July 27, 21, 2021.
Move that we approve the minutes, CVB? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beard, a second by Mr. Bryan. All in favor? That's unanimous. Number 17, in the matter of approval of amendment of number one to the contract between ESG Operations Incorporated and the city of Tupelo, Mississippi.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bryan. We have a second by Mr. Beard. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Johnny Timmons.
ESG, I would just ask...
The contract for you tonight is with ESG. They are actually our wastewater operator. They've been operating our wastewater plant for 16 years, done an excellent job. We've never had a violation of environmental quality with ESG. They have requested an increase in their contract, which they have not had an increase in nine years. So I would ask for your approval to increase it from 120,355 to 145,190.
Any questions for Mr. Timmons?
Not concerning the matter, but you said that since you're up here, I want to ask you about the time for the water. They're going to fix the water valve tomorrow?
Yes.
And a broken water valve in Haven Acres?
Yeah, tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, we will be discontinuing the water at Haven Acres until about 3 o'clock. And this is due to a replacement of a water main in Haven Acres. We hope to beat that 3 o'clock limit, but we should be well over that time.
That's our day. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Timmons? The motion is, in the matter of approval of amendment number one to the contract between ESG Operations Incorporated and the city of Tupelo, Mississippi. All in favor?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Item number 18 has been recommended in the matter of demolition resolutions to remain tied. So we don't need to vote on that. Just leave that tied. At this time, we're looking at the study agenda, which we have no items. Executive session, council?
No, President Palmer.
We have no executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gaston, and we have a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. So all in favor? We've enjoyed it. This meeting is adjourned.